Good evening, everybody. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Here.
Councilmember Patakley is absent. Mayor LaBrus.
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with an Open Publics Meeting Act and JSA 10:4-6 at sect, notice having been published according to law with a copy on file in the city clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board in City Hall.
Would everybody please rise for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, folks, we got a very, very busy council session tonight, so I'm gonna turn it right over to the city manager.
Yes, good evening, mayor and councilor, invited guests. Tonight, the council of the whole meeting for August 21st will start with a presentation from the Board of Education. Rosemary Marks, our board president.
First, we would like to thank you for the invitation to present. I would officially thank every one of you individually, but we are cognizant of our time. So, what you're gonna see now is the culmination of about three years of research, discussion, and one of the consistent factors in this past three years has been the hard work and dedication of not only all of our trustees, and I'd like to point out that you do have seven members of the Board of Education, plus our superintendent present here today to be here to answer any of your questions. But as I was saying, this is the culmination of a lot of hard work, but most specifically it is the hard work and dedication of our Chair of Facilities, Referendum, Long Range Planning, it's all in one group, and that would be Ms. Joanna Kaye. She's gonna come up to the microphone and she will lead you through the quick Cliff Notes nine-minute presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm gonna set my timer so I can actually stay to the time. So, as Lara mentioned, this is a presentation that's gonna be very quick for everyone. If you wanna see the full presentation page by page, you can go on our Hackensack website, the school website, we actually have the whole thing there, as well as another presentation we did before this one explaining the current state and what led to this presentation and this plan. So, thank you. So, the overall plan is to address the current and projected enrollment and capacity needs. We basically have three different buckets of issues. One is current updates that have to happen to the current buildings. Those of you that are Hackensack residents and have been here for awhile know that some of our buildings are pretty old, some of them were built in 1900s, 1920s, some of the new additions were 1860s, so we have to upgrade some of those buildings because of that. Additionally, you have upgrades of things that were not there before, that don't need to be fixed, but are needed because of programmatic needs. And then the other is upgrades for needs in terms of heating, just necessities in terms of AC and others. So, the plan would actually realign the district, district-wide, so now your elementary schools would become Kated, pre-K to two, your middle school building would become an upper elementary, which would be third to sixth grade, and then there'll be a new building, an upper junior high, junior high, which would be seven through nine, and then the high school building would become 10 to 12. So, I'm gonna go through every building quickly, and then you'll see what is happening to every one of the buildings. So, Fairmount, for instance, it's gonna get realigned, as we mentioned, they'll have toilet operations because for pre-K, they actually need to retrofit every building to be able to take in the pre-kindergarten. We don't have full-day pre-K now, we would have it under this new plan. The next one would be, so they're getting a new elevator as well, new secure vestibule based on what's going on nationally, we're having a lot of issues with school shootings, so part of it would also be to secure the buildings. You also have renovations, so this is a new drop-off area, for those of you that drive around town, you know that in a lot of our elementary schools, we're having issues with parents having to drop their kids off, the police having to block off streets for us to be able to drop our kids off safely, so this would actually take that on as well, and new alarm systems. Then you also have the HVAC. Most of our buildings across the district do not have AC, so when we have days that are pretty hot, which happen anywhere between April and June during the school year, sometimes as late as October or November, you have days that are up to 90, 95 degrees, our buildings are not ready to take those days. Hillers, you add the same thing in terms of alterations, cafeteria, suite renovations, coursework, classroom alterations as well, and then you also have the renovations, like I mentioned, many of these are very much the same from school to school because they're all very similar issues in HVAC. Jackson Avenue, it's actually one that's gonna need the least amount of renovations, it's one of the newer buildings that we have, it's also air-conditioned already, but it's the same thing, we're gonna get a new elevator there, a new secure vestibule, restoration to the outside of the building, door replacements, emergency lighting, and a lot of this you'll see, it's stuff that you don't see day-to-day, but stuff that you need, so a new boiler, new heating switches, et cetera, and your HVAC. Parker, alterations again to take on the pre-K, you would, we're actually gonna be relocating the main office so that it's in a better location for security purposes, and you're securing the building. Those of you that are familiar with Parker School, and for those of you that are not, Parker's actually an open-floor system like this, so the classrooms don't have walls, it's a big room with just dividers, and so that's not necessarily secure in case someone does get through into the building, so that has to be addressed, as well as renovations across the building, and HVAC. So, the middle school, as I mentioned, is gonna be moved on to a three, four, five, six building, so that building would be then retrofitted to take on the older little kids, no longer the middle school children, and so now it takes on having STEM lab alterations because we could actually have other programs that we haven't had before for those grade levels because they'll be having their own building. Same thing with upgrades to the building, the roof, part of the roof is being replaced this summer, the idea would be to have the next part replaced under this program in HVAC. The high school would also be, as I mentioned, moved to 10 to 12, so you're gonna have alterations across the building, new secure vestibule entrance as well, if you are driving up Beach Street during school days, it's actually really hard to drop off everyone there, a TV studio in mechanics, and renovations to the building as well, and HVAC. So, this is a new building, the new building is 789, it's about 195,000 square feet, projected to enroll about 1,477 students, 1,477. It would include science labs, STEM labs, a gym, auditorium, media center, everything you would need for a 789 building. This actually would mean that then that high school campus, because the building will be next door, becomes a campus, you're gonna have a junior, a junior building and a senior high building, and it includes a parking garage. So, this is a really important slide. If those of you that are familiar, you have the football field on the right, bottom right, and then you have where the new school would be, which is, for those of you that are familiar, it's the girls' soccer field, which is what we know of, or the big parking lot that you're familiar with. So, that's where the new building would be placed, and then the garage would be next to it, which is where you have the parking lot area next to that field. So, this is, this is just, it's not final in terms of what the final building's gonna look like, but it would be a brand-new building for the 789. The architects are really using state-of-the-art upgrades and new technology, and this is, again, by alteration, so you have total alterations for the district, the next one is total renovations for the district, and the next one would be total HVAC for the district. So, total, the new construction is the bulk of this project, it's about $97 million, and then the others are just separate based on the building itself, total is $165 million for the project, and I am done with three minutes left. Yes, lots of information, though. So, quickly, just, and we'll open up to questions after, I know that we have to go through the other presentations as well, but one thing that we really have to highlight is the fact that we really are trying to bring our school district to the 21st century. Our buildings, we've tried really hard to be fiscally responsible, we've done a lot of upgrades, every year we have upgrades that go on, we replace boiler gear, those are about a million each, and so there are things that unfortunately with time, we haven't been able to upgrade, and this would actually mean that we are retrofitting the whole district for the future. It's a brand-new Hackensack school district, it's a brand-new building, but overall it'll be changing completely, so, questions, please, bring them to us, send them over.
Send you one more minute?
Yeah.
Do you wanna mention the expansion?
Yes.
Partnership.
Thank you, absolutely. So, when you look at the boys' soccer field, or if you're from, the street is First Street and American Legion, we're actually thinking, thank you, yes, that's great, perfect, where the tennis courts are right now, I know folks have been concerned with the loss of football, of field space generally, so what we're doing actually is looking with the city now to build over American Legion in that block between Second Street and First Street where the tennis courts are. We've talked to the architects, if they're able to do that, we would actually be able to save some space for field, and then that boys' soccer field would be multi-use, so that then all the teams have enough time and space to be able to use the fields for their sports. We've talked with all the coaches, the director of athletics, to really figure out how to make sure that as we're moving this, not only do we add space, but we also retrofit the district to continue to do the academics and the sports that we do now. Yep.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
I have just a quick question.
Yeah, please.
Because we have three sending districts coming, in Maywood, Rochelle Park, and South Hackensack. Would those ninth graders still go to our junior, senior, the junior high school?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't impact the sending districts in any way, it's the same campus, so even the busing system will still be the same.
Right, okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Sure, thanks.
Appreciate it.
And again, thank you for coming, and you're welcome anytime.
Absolutely.
I know you have other information, and we kept you to 10 minutes because we have a busy night, but please, you wanna come back next time, you just let us know and we'll get you on the agenda, we're happy to have you.
Anytime, perfect, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks again, guys, and I wanna thank the Board of Ed for, all of yous for coming tonight, I know everybody's busy, and we appreciate the extra time for you to come down here, so, but you guys are welcome anytime, thank you.
Okay, next on the list is a presentation from Fran Reiner, our planner, in reference to the record site. Fran?
Thank you. So, this evening, I'm gonna make two presentations, the first one will be amendments to the redevelopment plan. Frank is...
While this is loading, do we wanna talk about the tree? Get one out of the way.
My notes over there.
It might be up. There you go, sorry.
Hold on.
Trying to save some time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So, this evening, I'm gonna present, this is the first reading, what will be, the next step in the process would be to go to the planning board, present the amendments to the record site redevelopment plan at the planning board in September, and then second reading would be back in front of you, so each one of those has the opportunity for public comment. As, as everybody knows, the record site is located on River Street, the, you can go, the plan was actually adopted originally in 2015, at that time, it met the state plan, still does, the Bergen County Master Plan, 2001 Master Plan, 2009 reexamination report, and the downtown plan. What I did, instead of going through and the specifics of the plan, since it's already been adopted and you've already seen it, is what I tried to do is really just call out the differences between what is being proposed in the amendments versus what was originally proposed and approved back in 2015. So, the uses that are within the plan are the same, we have eliminated the requirement of a 1.35 acre set aside for the hotel, if you recall, we had in the original plan a provision that was gonna require the developer to wait four years to see if a hotel was used that could be, could be completed on the site, we've eliminated that as a timeframe. Building heights were reduced from what was previously permitted at 92 foot to what is now permitted in this redevelopment plan at 72 feet. In addition, we eliminated the provision that allowed for up to 25% of the roof area to go up to 176 feet, so all the buildings will be a maximum of 72 feet, which is consistent with the rehabilitation plan that, and redevelopment plans that have been adopted within the downtown. Just go back one more, please. Additional requirements, minimum 40-foot depth, previously retail was encouraged, in this particular plan, it is required, we've reduced dimensions between buildings along the waterfront, the minimum lot sizes are very similar, we reduced the minimum lot size from 500 square foot to 475 square foot, and then per the rehabilitation plan amendments that were just before the planning board and just previously before you, we've essentially met all of the new requirements that we have for all of the rehabilitation plans in, as in respect to the size of under 500 square foot, at 5%, between 550 and 650, 20%, and 25% over 1,200 square feet, so those are all consistent with the rehabilitation plan. The floor heights, we've reduced the requirement from 16-foot at the first floor in the retail to 14 feet, the parking, we've reduced from 1.5 spaces to 1.4 spaces per dwelling unit, we've slightly reduced the requirement of the landscape area along River Street from 12-foot, that is the area between the curb and the sidewalk, that is not the area between the curb and the building, so we've, we've modified the landscape area where the street trees would be, and we've, we've adopted the shared parking requirements that are consistent with the rehabilitation plan that have recently been adopted, so we're trying to make everything come in line with what the rehabilitation plan is, is required. Same thing with street scape and screening standards, we're consistent with the rehab plan requirements now, which have changed over the last three years, that's why it's being amended here. I mentioned the floor height, the architectural requirements and the Hackensack Riverwalk requirements are all the same in the document. This was the previous plan, that was, that was one of the previous plans that was in the 2015 plan, so I wanted to show you the difference in, from a conceptual standpoint. Some of the things that you'll note is the area with, so River Street is on the bottom, the road coming through the middle, and accessing Hackensack Street is Atlantic Street Extension, if you hit the next one, you'll see that this is what is now more of a developer-driven kind of concept plan, very similar in that buildings front onto Hackensack River and front onto the Riverwalk. There is still a very large area located on the Atlantic Street Extension going to the river, so that's intended to be the plaza area, public kind of space, the blue represents what will be retail, so we're activating the riverfront, which was a, which was a consistent theme in the original redevelopment plan, and then the developers looking at a modified type of development, Building A includes some structured parking, the remaining portion of the, of the project would be surface parking. So, this is, this is taking a redevelopment plan concept that did not have a developer and making it the ability for a developer then to move forward, and we believe that is holistically consistent with the original redevelopment plan, as well as the rehabilitation plans for the downtown. Just to show you some concepts of elevations, these will all be in front of the planning board at a site plan application, so these are not final, these are just some ideas, specific materials and, and design features will be, will be much more advanced at the time that a site plan application goes to the board from a developer, keep going, just a couple of different buildings and the elevation, so we're trying to be consistent. I wouldn't get caught up with the darkness of the, I think it's more of just the rendering than, as opposed to what ultimately will be, will be built. And then some concept plans, this was Building A with the structured parking, so this represents the first floor, to the bottom of the page is, is where River Street would be, and then the upper floors commonly or typically would be what's next, which would be residential units that face into a courtyard and then out to the public streets, so that's a concept plan the developers take into the next level, and then this represents one of the buildings that will face onto the public plaza area and, and also wrap around to the riverfront walkway, so the blue represents retail on the first floor, and then if you go to the next one, you'll see that residential units are located above. Go ahead. So, with that, that's really the differences between the record site redevelopment plan that was adopted in 2015 and the one that will be in front of the planning board and then back in front of you in the next couple of months.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Fran.
He has another presentation.
Do I have one more presentation? The next presentation I'm gonna make is, as a part of the continuing efforts that the city makes, that one right there, yeah, the city makes to, to deal with the stormwater issues, the combined stormwater sewer issues, and the flooding that is a result of, of the city having a combined system. The city has initiated a process to investigate, to determine if certain areas meet the statutory criteria as an area in need of rehabilitation within the city. These areas are generally located along Essex Street to the left, you have Railroad Avenue, a prospect to the bottom and top, if you go on to the next one. So, the investigation study that we have, and again, this is first reading, so the second, we will present this at the planning board in September, and then back to you for final vote, the second reading sometime after that, is consistent with the master plans and the reexamination reports. Most importantly, the plan of moving this forward promotes the rehabilitation separation of stormwater and sewer lines in an area that right now runs, is high in terms of the, is the physical location and runs downhill into where the city floods, and so the, this study will help promote the, help promote the fixing of some of those issues as the city continues to deal with all of the issues from a combined system. It will help with the reduction of flooding, just go back one, it supports the revitalization of urban areas, it allows it a maximum of five-year abatement and promotes economic growth, and, go ahead. The rehabilitation requirements, I've highlighted the two that we would, we would be looking towards and have, have placed into this document, which would be that the majority of the water and sewer infrastructure in the delineated area is at least 50 years old and is in need of repair or substantial maintenance, and that a program of rehabilitation would effectually help prevent further deterioration. So, what we've done, go ahead, as a part of this report is, that's just in terms of where it's located, the area that we're designating in relation to the rest of the city, the, so what we did is, is we, we did some onsite investigation, we reviewed Arcadis, who has done some reports for us, those reports indicated that the sewer lines in this particular area were dated from 1900 to 1911, we then went and looked at eight different locations where we popped manholes and took photos, and were able to understand that the materials that are used in those are brick arch, they're in poor condition, and they're a combination of sewers and stormwater. This meets the rehabilitation requirements in that they are over 50 years of age, we've confirmed that with both onsite inspections and the Arcadis report, and that they're in a state of disrepair, and they're, and they're needed in order to help with the flooding problems that are occurring downstream from, from these areas. Go ahead. So, this is the Arcadis, this is one of the maps Arcadis provided us, on the right represents our area highlighted in relation to the rest of the city, and then a blow-up, and the legend essentially represents that these lines are between 1900 and 1911 in terms of age. Go ahead. We then went and took photos, and you can see, the map on the right represents where we took photos within the study area, so we got a good kind of location of where we popped manholes, and you can see over the next two slides that these are brick arches, very similar to what you would anticipate seeing for, for stormwater drains that are this age, and so in complete disrepair, could collapse, I know the city's had issues like that in the past, so these really represent needed improvements within this particular area. So, with that, like I mentioned, we will be presenting this to the planning board in September, and then they'll be providing recommendation back to the mayor and council, and then you will have an opportunity to see it at second reading.
Is there any questions from the council for Fran before he departs?
None here. Okay. Thank you.
Fran, thank you so much for coming in. Next on the agenda is flood mitigation from Barbara Davis.
Good evening, my name is Adam Strobel, I'm with the County Bergen Department of Parks, Open Space Trust Fund, we're here this evening to make a final presentation on floodplain acquisition planning that the city professionals and county consultants have been putting together. The county trust fund provides grant dollars to municipalities to help acquire properties that are flood-prone, try to remove structures from flood, known repeat flood zone areas, and hopefully restore those areas in the floodplain protections. So, we're here to talk about the final proposal, presentation, I have Barbara Davis with the Land Conservancy of New Jersey to walk through that, we also have some boards to talk about floodplain restoration activities that could happen afterwards. Thank you.
So, my name is Barbara Haskins Davis, I'm with the Land Conservancy of New Jersey. Bergen County has contracted with us and with Rutgers University to prepare these flood buyout plans, these flood acquisition plans for municipalities. The approval of these plans will enable Hackensack to apply to Bergen County's open space program for flood mitigation dollars. It's a requirement of the program that you have the approved plan. This plan, you can go to the next slide, documents where watersheds the municipality falls in, where your stream gauges are, where your public lands are held, and where your private lands are. It provides documentation on past flooding events, and this was provided by your emergency management professionals, your engineer and your planner. Hackensack's located primarily within the Hackensack River watershed, a very small corner is within the Saddle River watershed, it's four square miles, you have over 44,000 individuals and just under 20,000 housing units. You're bordered by Coles Brook, Van Saan Millbrook, the Hackensack River, Riser Ditch, and Berry's Creek. Flooding comes primarily from Coles Brook, Van Saan Millbrook, Berry's Creek, and the Hackensack River, those are your primary points of flooding within the municipality. You have 15 municipal parks totaling about 80 acres, and office space and commercial land, as you can see from this map, are the predominant land use in Hackensack adjoining your residential properties. Your most severe storm events recently were Hurricane Irene and Superstorm Sandy, these are photographs from Hurricane Irene showing the flooding, there are videos actually on your website that show the rising floodwaters, which are fairly dramatic. You do have roads that are closed during major storm events, and that's really what we focus the analysis on, what roads do you close, what roads require emergency vehicle support, and what residents do require the same type of emergency type of response. Your flood insurance rate maps were updated in 2014, it shows that 343 acres in Hackensack are located in the 500-year storm, 683 acres are located in the 100-year storm. Within that 683 acres, you have 549 residential properties, of this, 271 are detached and 25 are condominium or multi-unit, so your residential properties represent a lot of people living within them. What we focused on was the Johnson Avenue project area, this area has the highest amount of properties that have filed claims with FEMA for repetitive and severe repetitive loss. In talking to your professionals, what was recommended was a three-phased approach for this particular area, with the first phase really being that portion of property that's adjoining Van Saan Millbrook. So, as you can see from this map that's blown up, the first phase, which is identified in the green line, is the green line, is adjoining Van Saan Millbrook. The second phase, which is in the pink, is in the, in the middle area, has a number of your residential properties. And the third phase is that last triangle bordered by Johnson Avenue. It's located in the northern part of the city, it's primarily impacted by Van Saan Millbrook, and it can coincide with several of the long-term redevelopment plans that the Hackensack has on record, and we did speak with Fran about this. We did look at other areas in the municipality that would be potential flood mitigation areas. This is one in South River Street, you can see it on the Google map to the left and the municipal map to the right. This and the others that we did look at, which are on the following slides, you can go ahead, Tracy Place, and I, so Tracy Place, so South Newman and Tracy Place, was that they don't have the number of residential properties that you have in the Johnson Avenue area. The county program is geared towards helping people, helping to remove people from harm's way, so it needs to be a residential property. So in order to qualify for the county program, it needs to be a residential property. Next slide. So, what the county has done is that not only are they working to help municipalities to purchase property for flood mitigation, they also have funding to restore that property so that it functions properly in terms of flood storage. The posters to my right are, were prepared by Rutgers University and provide a few schematics of how the restoration would look and what would it entail. And the total purpose is to restore the property, remove the infrastructure that's there, and replant and relandscapes so that it's accessible to the public, and in periods of high storms, it will hold those floodwaters. So again, this is a photograph of the intersection of Temple and Johnson Avenue where you can see the standing water. In order for Rutgers University to identify the steps involved in terms of what the restoration would be, they did conduct a site and vegetation survey to establish the existing conditions, and they documented that with the photographs, which resulted in the sketches to my, to my right. And then they evaluated what opportunities there were for restoration. This is a blow up of the poster, which shows the Phase 1, 2, and 3 of the Johnson Avenue area, and you can see where Van Saan Millbrook is, and the restoration that's proposed in that area. And again, Bergen County can be a partner in applying for funds to implement this plan. So, in summary, for the restoration program, it would restore the floodplain functioning, it provides open space and recreation benefit, and most importantly, increases stormwater management. The Land Conservancy has worked with communities from Passaic County, Morris County, Middlesex County, and Bergen County on their flood buyout programs. And where we've seen success is the combination of buyout and restoration. If you don't pull up the infrastructure that's there, you're going to have sheet flow of water, and the land that you've worked so hard to acquire will no longer be able to absorb the water that you needed to during these storm events. Next slide. So with that, Adam and I are here to answer questions. Unfortunately, Michelle from Rutgers had a family emergency and couldn't be here this evening. The clerk's office with the Land Conservancy and the county have prepared a resolution for the council to consider to approve the plan. This is, this plan is not part of your master plan, it does not become a public document because the plan does include repetitive loss and severe repetitive loss information, which is confidential. What the approval of the plan will do is that it will enable the municipality to apply to Bergen County for funding to implement its recommendations at the time at which Hackensack feels that it's appropriate to do so, and you have a willing landowner that's interested. So with that, Adam and I are available for questions, and we thank you.
Any questions?
Barbara, I got, I got a problem with this.
Okay.
It floods over there by the high school on First Street. It floods on Clay Street, High Street, for Dan Place, Berry Street.
Stanley.
Stanley Place. And they want to mention it all in here.
Right, right. And now those were looked at, and it doesn't, doesn't mitigate the fact that those areas do have flooding events. The Johnson Avenue area was selected as a higher priority due to the concentration of already reported loss in that area. The county program will match federal funds, will provide the match for that, which is why that particular area was elevated. It does not mean that you could not apply for other properties within the city. The plan is fairly broad in terms of its mapping, and the county would work with the city if another property became available and the city wanted to apply for that funding.
Did you guys look at Johnson Avenue so much because we're putting up random buildings down there? I think you forgot about the other people in the middle of the city. I think you truly forgot about them.
No, and I, I do appreciate your comment, and no, it was not because of the new construction that's taking place or planned to take place, it was really solely because of the level of loss that's been seen in that particular area.
Are you saying that people in Stanley Place and Berry Street, because they aren't complaining or filing for FEMA, that they're getting, you know, pushed in the back or whatever?
Well, that's, that's an interesting way to, to look at it, and I'm not going to minimize your, your statement at all. Because this follows, this particular document follows a fairly prescribed format in terms of identifying where loss has taken place, identifying where emergency vehicles have had to vacate or remove people during storms, and in conjunction with your professionals, it's why particular areas were looked at within the city. And again, it doesn't mean that if a property owner becomes interested and qualifies for the county program, that the city couldn't apply. The city can absolutely apply for that funding. This is the document by, the vehicle by which you can make those applications.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because we're going to have the lightning round here.
Good.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the tree removal on the green. The city of Hackensack, I don't know initially when the tree was planted that we use as our holiday tree, Christmas tree at the green, but because of its condition, I was asked by the mayor and council to look, having a professional look at it, so we brought a professional arborist to come out and look at the tree. And unfortunately, I don't have good news for that tree for the pending holiday. We had Matt Sigler come out, who's an arborist, look at the tree. Maybe people don't realize that we do such a good job of decorating that the tree looks beautiful when it's decorated, but underneath that, it's wired up, boards are propping the branches up, it's in really poor condition. As he indicates, the top of the tree branches, let me get the right part, is supported by the branches, the tree is thin, and the inner part of the branches, the top of the tree is broken in the past storm and now has a co-dominant leads to it, which these lead to future problems, and there appears to be wood rot to the old top of the tree where it was broken off. So, the recommendation from the arborist is that the tree should be removed, and we should find, either recommends an evergreen such as a Colorado spruce, or a proper evergreen for that site. So, the mayor and council, obviously on the initial reaction, was not too happy that we would lose our tree after all those dedicated years of service to the, to the community, and we look forward to decorating and obviously celebrating the Christmas season. However, I think we need to face the reality that it would be the recommendation of this arborist and the city manager that the tree be removed. We do this soon, so we can plant in September, which is a good time to plant trees, so they can be properly set and also watered, because if you do it in the winter and they freeze, you'll, you'll freeze the roots of it. And we'll be ready for a new, thinner, hopefully happier tree for this coming holiday season.
Thank you.
Number five is 50 Main Street pilot. We've gotten some information.
Still got number four.
Sorry. My apologies. Four was the tree removal, five is the River Edge Sewer Hookup Agreement. We've been up with this with our tax collector, and the Borough of River Edge has a sewer payment and a history. And this has been previously discussed with the mayor and council. And the agreed amount was $430, and it's been reviewed by our CFO. However, this was a longstanding agreement, and the price has not been altered since 2013. So, our tax assessor, who has a current medical condition who can't be here tonight and is out on a medical, when she comes back, we just want to revisit this one last time before we make the final approval of the mayor and council.
I think the key is we have to get the data from BCUA.
That's.
In other words, what happened over the years is, is this number, you know, this is based on, on the charges that the city receives and that River Edge is paying us for those charges, and those charges have risen dramatically above the 400, as we saw a couple of years ago. So I think, in a nutshell, we want to make sure we get the new fees, or an accurate estimate of what the new fee will be, and then use that to negotiate with River Edge, correct?
We just want to make sure that we're correct.
Right.
So, we're going to revisit this one last time to make sure that all the facts and figures that have been presented are accurate.
Thank you.
Number six, 50 Main Street pilot. We have a memo from Brian Nelson, our redevelopment attorney, and we're approving a pilot transfer. Apparently...
Was mansion? Is it change in ownership?
Change of ownership of, I have to dig through to figure out what the name of the new company is.
Mansion House Urban Renewal. It went from Mansion House Urban Renewal LLC to DPB Associates Urban Renewal LLC.
Thank you so much, mayor. So basically, there was a pilot, someone is now going to transfer the ownership of that pilot, but that, in the terms of that agreement, have to be approved by the mayor and council.
Correct.
So there's a resolution before you folks tonight to approve that transfer, if approved.
And again, to be really clear, one, it was only one of the partners, as so knows one, in that mansion house, there was multiple partners, so one of them has changed. So there is still some continuity there, so that's what keeps the pilot agreement kind of moving along intact, so it was just a change to one of the partners.
Okay. Thank you for that added information. Number seven, the discussion of the Sussex Street pilot. There is... As soon as I find it.
That's the old social security building, I'll talk about you, look, this old social security building, we've talked about this before, they're looking at about 80 units going into the, into that, and they're, they're looking for a 15-year pilot, which is exactly what, according to our rules and regulations, what we would be considering for them. That was the old social security building, so for many, many, many years, most of its lifetime, they actually paid zero taxes over there.
That's correct.
When the ownership was transferred, the taxes went on that existing building, which has now been demolished, but when the building was structured there, it was at $108,000 approximately in taxes they were paying. Our estimate with 80 units there on the first year of the pilot would be about a $215,000 revenue coming into the city. So we're kind of doubling what we were getting there by going forward with this pilot, and again, it will continue to increase over time as we're partnerships in their revenue.
Thank you.
I do this so many days. So much of my day is spent doing this, I can...
I finally found, I finally found my page in this World Book Encyclopedia edition I have here for the agenda.
We did, we did get a lot.
We're, we're good. Any questions, or can I move on? Okay, next is number eight, I don't want to make sure I skipped over anything, is going to be pulled. For a refinement of our legal counsel, who, Mr. Kleiman's not here tonight, so it'll be on the September 4th meeting. And next is number nine, New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Local Planning Services Grant Resolution. Which is, this is a introduction of an ordinance that will, oh wait a minute, I'm going to skip one more.
No, it's just a resolution.
I'm sorry, resolution. This helps with our open space master plan. Let me find my notes. This is an open space master plan, the route that we would like to take in regards to applying for grants. This would allow us to put together resolutions and, and for Deb to be inclusive. So, what we're trying to do is basically widen the scope of us for opportunities for grants. Does the mayor and council have any questions?
None here. Any questions?
No. We're not applying for the second part of that, which was the life science one, just the whole, right, okay.
Number 10 is a Bergen County Shared Services Agreement for Animal Control. Apparently, there's new state regulations that now require that we have on staff a certified animal control, what is this new title? I'll find it. So, oh, Improve Enforcement of the State Animal Welfare and Animal Cruelty Statute, Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Implementing in a Place of a Joint Municipality-County System. Requirement of every municipality to appoint a municipal humane law enforcement officer, M-H-L-E-O. That is going to cost us an additional $1,800 per our agreement. So, we're going to reassess that cost in 2019, but apparently, each municipality in Bergen County are going to be on the hook for this additional increase because this is now the new requirement, so. If there's any questions for the mayor and council, I'll move to number 11, which is the amendment to the Code 93-7 Garbage Collection Regulation. This was reviewed by our city attorney. There is, the Department of Public Works has determined that suitable garbage receptacles provided by or purchased from the city of Hackensack should not be used for garden refuse, including grass clippings and tree branches, but these items should be placed in a brown recyclable paper bags or other suitable receptacles as termed defined in Chapter 93 of the Code clearly marked for garden refuse. So, this is just to define the terms and make sure that the city has defined terms so residents and the public know what's acceptable or not, because the last thing we want to do is get into a wrangle where it winds up on a curb and nobody will pick it up, and then we spend our days back and forth that, well, it doesn't say this, or it should have said that.
So what day is they going to pick up these brown bags?
That is not included in the, in the ordinance, that's included in the policy, and that will be forthcoming.
That, that was just so that people didn't use the blue garbage cans.
They can still use a garbage can.
Yeah, but not the blue city cans.
Their own, or one purchase for that reason.
That's what it was, not the blue city cans. Because they have the big ones, and then you have the little ones.
People are putting their grass clippings in their, their garden stuff in the blue cans, which they shouldn't be doing.
Correct.
For trash and garbage.
And do put them in plastic bags, which we don't want them to do. So if you tie them neatly, it's okay, if you use another trash receptacle, it's okay, just don't put them in garbage bags and don't put them in the dumpster.
The problem is, we need to be clearer when they can pick up these bags, because if we ride through this town, there are bags everywhere.
We had this conversation, and I'll address that. But that doesn't go in this, in this. But duly noted, I have it written down.
Recycling day?
It goes out on recycling day.
Recycling day. So whatever your recycling day is, that's when you put them.
Every other week?
No, every, whatever your recycling...
Day is, recycling day is every week. It's not rubbish day, it's recycling day. So, on recycling day, you can put this out, but you can't put it in plastic bags and you can't, well, you wouldn't have your regular garbage can.
Okay. Unless there's any questions, I'm going to move to the next, which is the unfit... Unless there's any questions, I'm going to move to the next, which is the Unfit Building Resolution. The city of Hackensack, in its ordinance, does not have a clearly defined issue of what do we do with buildings that are in disrepair, hazardous, abandoned. Unfortunately, the city is faced with people that walk away from buildings, foreclosures, bank-owned, and these conditions have to be, remain safe because, you know, we have children and people and they get curious and we don't want any of these hazards. So I explored this and found through the efforts of Steve Kleiman that the city does not have a clearly defined policy. So tonight is the first introduction of the newly-named Unfit Building Resolution: Abandoned and Nucent Property Ordinance. The only thing that I will add is that the ordinance reads that basically the police department will, let me see if I can find it quickly. Let's see here. Somewhere in this document, and I can't find it right this second, basically starts the process with the police department.
That's in the resolution, Ted, I think, here.
Yeah, here it is, I got it.
I think it's the fourth whereas. The fourth whereas in the...
Yep, okay. The city council believes that foregoing represents the substantial health and safety concerns of the fully warrants the exercise of the city police power to repair, close, or demolish unfit buildings when necessary subsequent to procedural protection requirements and the appropriate ordinance that complies NJESA 4048-2.3. My only concern is that, I think we have to craft that language, just tweak it a little bit, because I think the police department is obviously the reporting or the introductory to the process, but I think construction, because of their understanding of building structures and the process of doing this, nothing against our police department, I think that they're very well gifted, but I don't know if they have all the ins and outs of demolishing or, so I think there has to be just a little tweak in the language.
There has to be some criteria.
Yeah, but I thought that was, didn't it? I thought it was, what was explained to me is that the police department had the authority, like if it was a safety concern.
Absolutely.
So in other words, say building department wasn't around and the police department saw some unsafe condition, they could act on it.
Right.
Or five, at least five residents of the city.
Yeah, I think we need an and/or in there.
Yeah, I'd just say, if you look in the actual ordinance itself, the designation of the code official has got the right to investigate conditions within the city to determine. So within the ordinance itself, it does designate the construction code official.
I retract my statement.
What I don't see is any language in here.
I asked the same question, that's what I'm saying. I think, and that's how Steve explained it to me, that this was just if there was a safety issue, that the police could initiate, initiate or a health, serious health concern, the police could initiate it even if the building department wasn't around.
Police department's here 24/7.
Yeah, right, and that's the thing.
And the construction, obviously, is here, basically, by blocking that.
What I don't see is any language in here, and I'll give you an example of an abandoned gas station that's been, this is an abandoned building where we wouldn't have the power to demolish it because it would have environmental issues where we probably couldn't touch the building. So we need to be careful that we, you know, we can't be taking on knocking down and getting involved in some environmental issue like an old gas station that has contamination from leaking tanks and stuff like that. So, and we have quite a few of them in town.
This ordinance is permissive. It doesn't require you to do it.
Right.
It's if the construction code official, the city wants to undertake it. You always have the right to go to court if you had to in the case of the gas station, to go after the owner to force those issues. So, and what initially starts, the code official actually gives an order to the owner to do some work.
Well, the language of the five, the five homeowners, you know.
That just triggers the investigation by the construction code official.
It still would be our decision after.
Right.
Okay. We're good?
Onward.
Number 13, Environmental Commission Ordinance. Apparently, we're allowed to have up to seven members on the board. They have two alternates they want to add. We cannot exceed the maximum to put on a commission of this board is seven. So the recommendation is to approve two alternates for this process.
I think this is the best news of the day, that we have all these people that want to be involved. This is great.
All good?
Great news.
Number 14, Access of All Board Appointments. We have a gentleman named Jamie Rodriguez that is interested in being added to the access for all board appointments. He wants to be on that committee and the mayor and council have to approve it.
Okay.
Number 15, Berry Street Bus Stop Relocation. Because of construction, we've been asked to move the Berry Street Bus Stop to a different location because of construction. This way, NJ, DE, NJ DOT could move this temporarily to weaken, get the construction done and still have access for residents to be riders on the bus.
This is Berry and River, so it's just moving it like across the street?
I believe it's some distance, but it's, I believe it will still service the neighborhood and the committee and the riders that are in that section. Number 16 is the NJ DOT Transportation Alternative Set Aside Grant. This is a grant that Millennium Strategies has put forth, he played us, this will strengthen our culture, environmental aspects of the nation inter-model system. So basically, this helps us with our streetscape and if approved, the completion of Main Streetscape from Atlantic to Banta Project would be the next place we would be applying for funds for.
Okay.
That's number 16. Number 17, Update of Steib Park. The issue that was brought at a council meeting is that the lights in Steib Park remain on and people are utilizing the park or playing basketball past the provided hours. We researched that, that's a PSE and G light, there's no way to put it on a timer, and I'm not going to consider removing lighting out of parks because of safety concerns. So my proposed plan, and I spoke to our new director, unfortunately could not be here tonight, has his regrets. We're going to use the inspection and enforcement component from the police department, that they're going to put that on their regular sheet, so when parks close, the police are going to be checking those parks at those hours. So we have compliance, we're going to make sure that these parks are empty at the time that the parks close. Obviously, we had the temporary thing for the summer hours, that'll draw to a close after the start of school, that'll elapse and we will move forward. Number 18, we have had numerous phone calls, and I mean numerous phone calls, for the city to consider a medical marijuana dispensary in the city of Hackensack. I guess they're are looking for sites within these communities to provide medical marijuana for, obviously, medical purposes, to bring relief to people, and they're looking to do so. If the mayor and council would consider it, and there's, I've had some discussion with council members, that obviously it was within the medical zone and there was, you know, an agreement there, that might be something for you folks to consider. It's something that certainly doesn't have to be decided tonight, but obviously, there's a judgment that needs to be made, if that's right for the city or not.
One of my concerns, and I spoke to Kathy about it a little while ago, medical marijuana has been legal throughout the state, certain areas have medical marijuana dispensaries for years, but all of a sudden, with Governor Murphy looking towards legalizing recreational marijuana, there's been a huge influx of interest for medical marijuana dispensaries in the city, which kind of piques my interest. Why now? Now, how is that tied into recreational marijuana? And is there any tie-in that once they become a medical marijuana dispensary, that they actually might have some loophole where they could become recreational? It's just, I'm very concerned about that. Not against medical marijuana, I think it has its purpose, and the idea of putting it in a hospital zone, if you did have one, that would be the place for it probably, but, you know, after I had a phone call yesterday from somebody, I started thinking, why all the interest now? I've had, in the last two weeks, four people reach out to me for medical marijuana dispensaries in this city. And in the last five years, I haven't had one, up to this last two weeks.
Correct.
So, you know, why now?
My vote would be that we have so much going on right now in the city, and especially in the hospital zone area as well, that I think that it's not, that we don't need another initiative at this point. I mean, I think we've got more on our plate, enough on our plate rather than that we're handling right now. So I would say at this point in time, I would not be looking into adding another initiative yet to our very busy state.
No, we're very, very busy. There's a lot going on, we have a lot on our plate, and I'm concerned about the redevelopment part too. How would it affect it?
I agree. I think we have to wait and see where the governor goes with the regulations and how that will play out with converting a medical dispensary to a regular dispensary. So I feel that we should wait a little bit to see.
And I didn't think I'd get to this, but number 19, which would be my last issue, is a resolution authorizing and directing the planning board to undertake an investigation to determine whether delineated area in various lots and blocks and it lists scads of them for an investigation to look at, an investigative report for H-U-M-C. Maybe I should...
I will step down for several minutes.
Wasn't that what Fran presented?
That's what Fran, yeah.
That's what Fran presented.
It's what Frances presented.
Right, but I didn't...
Okay, well, that was, and he presented two, so...
I'm going to discuss it, I'll take that.
Okay.
So, we had...
We saw his recommendation based on the sewers.
I was, I was just going to say, we had a presentation for Fran already this evening, but on the agenda tonight is for a resolution authorizing an investigation for rehab, rehabilitation investigation, and it lists all the lot and blocks of these. Fran obviously presented this. The infrastructure of these pipes is over 50 years old. We need to make sure that we deliver the services that we currently provide and need to provide for the future, and I'd urge the mayor and council to adopt this resolution so we can proceed on our fact-finding to make sure that we're ready to meet that challenge.
And I agree, and I mean, I think it's all about working together as partners, and if work is going to be done in the city as they're proposing, and we know that there's sewer issues, et cetera, now is the time to have them be partners with the city and do some of that work. So, you know, that's all part of this going forward, and a lot of it was the study that Fran did, which was, you know, looking exactly at what's there, how old is it, what's the conditions of it. And, you know, we know that we have runoff down further in the city, Newman Street, we know that that's a contributor. So why not let this all be part of the change? And I think, I think it's, I highly recommend it, I think it's what we need to do.
Okay, and that would complete the city manager's report for this evening.
Something to do.
He's coming.
Okay, I need a motion to open to the public, please.
Offer.
Second.
Thanks, Frank.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Constrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Tagley is absent, Mayor LaBrusso.
Aye. Anybody from the public who would like to speak, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk, and we have three minutes, thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name's Eddie Yametsch, I live at 130 Overlook Avenue, and I'm here to suggest to Hackensack Council an initiative that's been used nationwide in regards to the fines that have been collected from the parking. Now, as I've always said, you know, the parking in Hackensack is probably the only one that adheres strictly to Title 39. And I, my rough estimations, and this is my rough estimation, so I'm sure the city manager can verify or deny this, the money that's collected from illegal handicap parking in Hackensack probably tantamounts to about half a million a year. I base that on 40 tickets issued a week at 250, multiplied that by 52, and I think you'll get to a figure of around half a million. Now, Hackensack, as, you know, we sit here and we watch all these wonderful schools and wonderful projects, is way behind the ADA. I have had occasions where, you know, I have gone to the police station and I can't go into the police station because it's not ADA compliant. So why not use the money, like other places, to recycle, to make Hackensack more ADA compliant? And I think it's disgusting, quite frankly, to see a police department that's not handicap compliant. That's one of many issues, you know, none of the parking meters are compliant, you know, to ADA standards. And, you know, if this law is intended and we help the council because we are handicapped, get this money, then I think it should only be recycled, albeit maybe a portion of it, to help making handicapped access in Hackensack much more compatible with ADA standards, because currently, I do think you may face a legal challenge. I've gone to the police station to file a complaint, and all I can do is look up to the police officer. And I wanted to have a private conversation, not out in the public, but I've got everyone around me. You know, and, you know, one of the police officers said, well, come in the back. So you go through the back and there's a step, you can't even get into the police station, you know? And, you know, even downstairs in the municipal courtroom, you have the most strangest restroom. Under the ADA, you are required to make all facilities handicapped accessible, all public facilities. And when I go, yeah, I'll finish, man. When I go to the courtroom, I can't use the restroom.
And I concur with everything you said, I agree, and I don't think this is a bad idea, but it's something we have to discuss as a council with the city manager. I'm not so sure those numbers are right on target, but we will find out.
Right.
And, yeah, we don't know. And, you know, I'm sure I'd be the first one to tell you, we have a very old, old police station, and if it needs to be ADA compliant, then we should get it there. So I agree with you on that, we will look into it and see what we can do. Appreciate it.
One comment I do want to make is that last week I met with the Traffic Bureau, and we're now currently reviewing all of our handicap parking throughout the entire city, to want to make sure that the stalls are the right size and everything. So our conversations don't go unanswered or unnoticed. Like I said, I'm starting this process, we have some issues with a roof that needs to be repaired, and I'm not trying to make excuses for it, but I'm just trying to get this building serviceable, that it stops leaking first, and then obviously I'll try to approach this. But our conversations, I take very seriously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Regina de Pasco, Parker Avenue. 19 items in three minutes, okay. The Board of Education presentation, thank you, it looks really wonderful and I like the breakdown. I'm way past that, my son's going to be a junior in college, but I think it's a wonderful, wonderful thing. The record site, I hope somebody comes and does something with that, these changes, 72-foot height, that looks like, and retail required, those are absolutely good. The tree removal, thank you for having the report done, so you can back it up, but we all know it does need to come down. The sewer hookups, yes, get all the money we can because we're giving it away with the If we don't have the Class III officers in time for school, that kind of puts a damper on the plan for that, doesn't it? I would like you to take police power out of that resolution. plan for that, doesn't it? I would like you to take police power out of that resolution completely, even though the bulk of the resolution doesn't say it. Just having that in there is kind of off-putting. But, Stuy Park, the lighting, yeah, well, you know, the lights, we need them on, and they were not on in Carver Park, and nobody noticed. Nobody reported it. And even when I sent you all an email, nobody responded to me. Nobody, until Monday morning, and I sent it Friday. Marijuana dispensaries, it's coming. If not this council, somebody's going to do it. H U M C investigation report. What I found ironic was there's a homeowner on Summit Avenue that had runoff from their property, and they get a summons from the city, but we're bending over backwards because of the hospital to do it. The hospital has the money to do it. They don't need us. They don't need us to do it for them. They don't need our money, more of our money. Okay? Nixle. I get nixles from Bogota, that there's flooding. Lodi, that there's severe storm. From Maywood, when roads are closed. Hackensack, Carver Parks and Polifly Splash Park are closed. Really? Anybody that would take their kid out to a splash park in a thunderstorm, I'm sure they're not signed up for nixle. Okay? So, we get them three, four times a week, because that's how many times we've had thunderstorms. Is that the best use of our emergency notification, that the splash park is closed? Well, I'm getting from other towns that roads are flooded. I don't get that from, from Hackensack. Today, First Street was closed by the high school. So, going north on First Street, you had to go left at Beach, which is a pain in the neck, or if you went right, you ended up to Railroad, going the opposite direction you come from. No nixle, no nothing, no... If the other towns are doing it, and all we get, that or concerts can move to Hack Pack. It's very rare that we get a nixle that is really, really an emergency.
Thank you.
If I may just correct...
Go ahead.
Regina, the one thing about the medical center plan, it is not for the city to do this. It's part of their rehabilitation plan. This is something we're asking the hospital to do, the medical center to do.
We're spending money on it.
No, this is no. All of this money comes from their escrow account.
Even the, the study?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
As with all redevelopment projects.
I love top...
It costs, it costs the city now.
Okay, that's good. I'm glad we're getting something. Good evening, Kathleen Salvo.
Oh, no, don't start, don't, don't start Kathy yet.
I'm sorry.
And I, I agree with you, Regina. I think some of those nixles should, we should get more, because I get Lodi, and then, we need to get a grip on our...
Who's ever in charge of that nixle, needs to do it, step up to the plate. Okay, don't start my clock.
Can I ask you one thing before you start, especially traffic alerts, because I do hear that at the Chamber of Commerce meetings?
Yeah, and there's so many of them. We did so much today.
That the Chamber of Commerce really wants to make sure that we keep those traffic alerts going, because it helps with the flow business.
Because you can take, you can take an alternate route, if that's the case. Okay. Good evening, Kathleen Salvo, forty-seven Lodi Street, Hackensack. Unfortunately, the tree has to come down, because it is in bad condition. If you go under it, because I used to do a debriefing and take all the vines out, it's all rotted in the inside, and the top has been compromised. And I think we've had it over twenty years. And the reason it lasts so long is because we have water in the park, and it, and it helped the other place, so the towns have put in it and have water. So, we have to replace it, hopefully with the same kind, because Bruce Bruce is a little bit delicate, so we have to do some research as to what kind we're going to put in. In nineteen eighty-nine, I think the ADA said all public buildings had to be handicap accessible. We did, we did City Hall when LaCava was here. We had to make the elevator bigger to accommodate the wheelchair, because we couldn't get anybody up here. And the police department, I think you can get them in the ramp in the back, but there's one step in the front that we have to do it. Because even the voting places...
There's a step in the back, too.
There's a step in the back.
Yeah, the step in the back, too. So, that should have been addressed.
Well, I think, I think the entrance and getting into the police station itself is ADA compatible. It's, he wanted a private conversation in the back, and that couldn't happen.
Well, there's a staircase when you get in, and, well, he could have gone to the left in that little room if that were the case, but it needs, it needs to be addressed.
And there should be a bathroom.
And the bathrooms, the doors have to be bigger. That's what makes, and, you know, in order to accommodate the wheelchair. But I thought that was done in eighteen eighty-nine, well, all the public buildings. I wasn't here for the presentation, but I, I hear it's good for the Board of Ed, and thank you for working on it. And I just hope, this is just a sugge- a suggestion, that the building is done with educators, so we don't get, like Maple Hill, that has a flight of steps that any kid could go flying down, that everything is interior, and, and you need to put people that are in, who are educators in the building to work on the plan. Don't let the architects tell you what you need. You need to tell them what you want. Because so many times that happens, and we get, we get a bad building. Hi. So, please be involved. I'd like to be on the committee, too, because I was on the committee on the other one. So, finally, we're getting there, and it looks like a nice, it's going to be a nice program. Flooding, welcome to Hackensack. Everything is flooding. It was ironic that these people should tell us that we need more open space, and all we're doing is putting more buildings and covering more land, and the water just has no place to go. And it's always been like that. And talking about sewer systems, down in the first ward, that system is over a hundred years old, and that's going to fall apart when we start, start putting all those bathrooms in there. So, that's not good either. What else am I going to say? I want to thank my, our, what is it, our, yeah, DPW, our fire depart- our police department. We worked really hard all week to make, to bring Carver Park back to where it should be, because I stopped, I stopped doing that one. I do all the lights, but I just stopped doing it like six years ago, and I didn't realize it got so bad. So, Fred and all of the people from the tree department, and David Hayes from the lighting department, we found spotlights that were out like five years, and we pay fifty dollars a month, that's a hundred dollars a month that we weren't getting. We pay for the lights, whether they're on or not. So, when I report lights out, I'm saving you guys a lot of money. So, this is what we, we found, and we're fixing them, and we might need another one, but we're going to try a different route. But I'm going to come to you, because I asked the man next door, he's not going to bother you.
Thank you, Ms. Salvo.
So, tonight, I will be there again.
Thank you.
Okay, you are welcome.
Thank you.
I'm Rich Serbo, forty-six Spring Valley Avenue, Hackensack. Look, I just want to, I missed the Board of Education presentation. I came in a little late. I doubt that it had anything to do with education. And I don't know if this is the proper place to mention it, but I saw the proclamation put out by the NEA for education. And let me tell you, I am appalled, and I will fight that tooth and nail until the day I die. That is nothing to do with education, and you're going to answer for it. I'm telling you. Okay? So, that's number one, when it comes to education. I mean, the presentation was what, about money and spending, I'm sure. Okay. So, second is the tree. I'm glad that Mr. Ehrenberg brought in an arborist, because the tree department in Hackensack is ruinous. They'll ruin trees right on your block. They ruined trees in front of my house, because they were hanging a little low. They could have just trimmed them the proper way. And maybe someone that has a little knowledge about trees would be good to speak with once these guys get out there on, with their equipment and, and trim trees. Now, a lot of trees are coming down also, and they're not being replaced. Especially Spring Valley Avenue, there's no more trees. I mean, they just took a few more down. Now, okay, maybe they needed to be taken down, but isn't there some kind of process to replace these trees? Now, I know there's something required by the, by the homeowner to say, "I want a tree there," or else they won't put it back. So, can we look around where a lot of trees are being taken down, and they're not being replaced? And some of these avenues now have no trees. It's absolutely ridiculous. Okay, couple more things, quick. I guess you can buy into the pilot programs. Is, is that the case? If a, if a new owner buys into a property that has a pilot program, they benefit, right? Is that, is that the case? So, it's, it's a free-for-all. It's a universal. Is it? Someone will explain it later, correct? Okay. Also, the last thing is, I, I just, I hope Mr. LaBrus doesn't have a paranoia, which was spoken about many years ago, when we all smoked marijuana. Okay? There's, there should be no paranoia, Mr. LaBrus, about any recreational use. I mean, they locked kids up years ago for having a few joints. I mean, those days are over, aren't they? And I, and I think they should be. So, the medical marijuana is fine. If there's any, some other side, side interests, don't worry about it. Okay? Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Laura Rodriguez, Clinton Place. I wanted to publicly acknowledge the cooperation between the Board of Education and the City Council. I don't know how many people are aware, but we have now concluded our third monthly meeting with the Board of Education and the City Council. A select group of the Board of Ed and a select group of the council meet once a month to discuss, discuss issues of concern on both of our parts. Our most recent meeting was yesterday, and I wanted to publicly thank the city manager. We made a request of him, and he will be bringing it to your attention. But our request was, in light of the school year starting back up, you saw in our presentation that in the future, we are going to try to have cutout areas for drop-on and drop-off, but right now, we don't have that. And if you've gone to any of our schools, you see in the morning, and you see in the evening, that parents will pull up to the school, and they'll wait, and they'll watch their child depart. And throughout the course of the year, we remind them of the proper habits and the proper behavior of drop them off and get moving, because everybody else has the same concerns that you do. But unfortunately, over the course of the summer, people forget what is probably the best habits with drop-on and drop-off. So, yesterday's meeting, we asked the city manager if the city would be willing to consider letting us use some of the electronic signage for a period of time leading up to the school starting, just to remind people that school's back in session at the entrances to the school. Please remember to keep it moving, let your child go on, go off. I don't know how he's going to word the sign, but the fact is, is that our request is to borrow the signs for a period of time leading up to the start of the school, just to remind people, school's back in session, drop your child, and then move on. So, again, this is an example of what has happened, when we sit once a month and just hash ideas out. So, for the record, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, council. My name is Joseph Companion from Teaneck, New Jersey. I pay taxes in New Barbados, aptly unnamed, Hackensack. I'm here today about Mr. B. Curtis Grayson III. He is a fine artist in the jazz community. His art has been featured around the world via a very famous broadcast company. He's the friend and family of many known jazz musicians. And I gave the, if you look at what you're doing on Main Street, myself and Martindale published that in nineteen ninety-four. Okay? We published that whole development plan, what you're doing. I'm the person who came up with Bergen Magazine, which begot the other idea of County Seed. Okay? I don't mind. Those are just ideas I gave out. But I had a project I've been working on since I was in my late twenties about Van Gelder Studios, saving that studio, putting up a monument there, and getting the kids involved through different programs and nonprofit ideas I've been working on for quite a while. I've been waiting for, for a good council to be able to do that. Lo and behold, something I published about the mural that was supposed to be at the high school, or somewhere on Main Street, where the other mural, I remember I was working on Main Street when they put that one over there, got onto Mr. Dibbs' list via me, or Tam Weeping was the name of my handle there. And Mr. Dibbs took it, and he wants my contact. I went to the meeting with the, with the various groups that are behind it, and I says, "Okay, you can have it conditionally. Just use the artist I recommend." And no. The, the Charm Group, which, which was from Renaissance Enterprises, which begot Charm, which begot the Main Street Alliance. Okay? Another one of my ideas, which I don't claim. I don't want them. They're free. You could have had that, and yet you're insulting the jazz musicians. You're insulting a very fine artist and, you know, and these bureaucrats who are getting hold of our art community. And now, and what I was also disappointed about, and I want to say this, is that you, that Nat Adely Jr., a legacy artist, was put on your fire on page two, on the bottom, and you guys are up there on, you shouldn't even have even been on there. You have a jazz musician of that caliber. You give them credit, and you don't put yourself, you don't push your agenda for it. That's wrong. That's totally wrong. Okay? And, you know, that's the artist I, that's all I asked. Take the whole project. You can even do the Van Gelder. I'll even give you the diagrams for the landscape drawing and the blocks and all the printing. You can even have the one over there on Twenty-five Prospect. Just do it right. This is not something for your reelection campaign and patting yourselves on the back. This is jazz, American black art form. A lot of people suffered to make this music.
Thank you, Mr. Companion. That's your three. Thank you.
Good evening, council.
Sir?
My name is Anthony DuBois. I'm the vice chair of the Bergen County Urban League. I'm here to let you guys know what we offer at Bergen County. We've been running a monthly food drive over in Inglewood, Liberty School, second Saturday of every month. And we want Hackensack residents to come. We want all Bergen County to come and participate. We also offer a Home Saver Program, which we help people who are in bad shape with their mortgages, to get current with their mortgages.
Anthony, what was that called? The home what?
Home Saver Program.
Home Saver?
Yes.
Thank you.
Our location is on Liberty Street in Inglewood, at the Liberty School. We also are having a Hundred Year Gala, which, we've been in Bergen County for a hundred years. We're one of the oldest organizations in Bergen County, and we're looking for Hackensack to come out and support, along with Inglewood, Teaneck, and the rest of the cities and towns. So, we just want you guys to know that we're here, we're for you, and we want to let you know what we're offering.
Okay, do you have any, do you have a card or any information you can leave with the city manager, or just even a contact number?
Yes.
Just write it down there, so we can... Is there a website for that, too, Anthony?
Yes, there's a, there is a website for the Bergen County Urban League. We are currently updating, as we speak.
Okay.
Because Bergen County Urban League has been a little dormant, and the word hasn't been out. So, I'm here to spread the word.
Okay.
Let everyone know that we're here. We represent Bergen County, and we want you guys to come out.
Great.
October what? Uh, October eleventh.
Right.
At the, I will drop off the information, the exact location. But we want you guys to be there, full force. I'm going to every city that I can, to let you get everyone know that we're here, and we're here to help.
Thank you, Anthony. Appreciate it. Go ahead, Rosemary. Sorry. How are you?
Well, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. Rosemary Marks, acting superintendent of Hackensack Public Schools. I'd like to echo the sentiments of President Rodriguez. A thank you, a very special thank you for allowing us to share our facilities plan with you and the public tonight. It is a plan focused on the educational needs of students in our district. I'd like to highlight that in the last nine years, our enrollment has grown by over nine hundred students. Our elementary schools serve, on average, about four-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred-and-fifty students. Needless to say, nine hundred students would represent two additional schools. One of the nicest highlights that I'd like to share with you tonight is the access to full-day pre-K and pre-K kindergarten needs across the district. We offer three-year-old programs for special-needs students. A few years ago, we looked at our numbers, and we observed that we're servicing about thirty percent of what we call the pre-K population in the city of Hackensack. Thirty percent is not a number that we want to stay at, nor a number that we, as a community, should be proud of. We, as a community in Hackensack, should be a premier educational district, offering early childhood education to provide for the needs at the earliest levels of our children in supporting educational success throughout later years. Very happy to share with you that although our pre-K state funding, just three years ago, was a little over four-hundred-thousand dollars, because of our pre-K expansion program and our pre-K expansion plan, which includes ECDC, and yes, unfortunately, because we do not have the space in our schools, we're paying a large sum of rent every year. the space in our schools, we're paying a large sum of rent every year, and unfortunately, that rent is a need. Why? Because we are servicing over 250 pre-K children at ECDC, and because we've expanded to full-day, our pre-K early childhood grant for the 2018, 2019 school year is now at $1.6 million of state aid to support early childhood. So our, our facilities plan is much more than just a brick and mortar plan. Our plan is an educational plan to serve the needs of the Hackensack children and the Hackensack community as a whole. Better educated children will be better involved, community citizens, and will hopefully be here representing the community in a few years. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Marks, appreciate it.
Good evening Mayor and Council, Francis Kajalja, 88 Catalpa Avenue. I just wanted to ask Mr. Ehrenberg, I had emailed a couple of times in the spring and the summer regarding getting a schedule of what streets were going to be paved. The response I got was that it was still being finalized. Now that we're at the end of August, is it safe for me to assume that no streets are being paved this, this year?
No, we are late this year in our CDBG funding. Obviously, we put together a street, we have gone for the budgeting, for the funding for this, and the identification of the streets, and I will send that to you. But those decisions candidly haven't been made, but I apologize for not responding to you soon.
So at this point though, we, there are a number of streets that will be paved, and you know which ones they are?
We have identified them, yes.
Okay, so you'll let me know, awesome. The other question is, someone earlier had brought up trees when they come down due to storms. So on my property where I live on the corner of Catalpa and Lewis, I've lost several trees due to Superstorm Irene and Sandy. So would I be eligible to have those trees replaced, like now in the fall, or is that something that I have to wait for the fall?
I think they need to be identified. Were they city trees, or were they?
Right.
They're city trees.
Yeah, so like on the little strip between the sidewalk and the curb.
Okay. The city of Hackensack, just till this year, had a basically defunctive shade tree commission. So we've rebuilt that board, we have an active committee now, we are reviewing the city ordinance for trees. Basically, we're going to create a fund. If the tree comes down, we're going to replant. If somebody puts in a request and has the tree moved down, there'd be a fee so we could generate revenue, so we could replant with consistency. This is an area that needed to be addressed, and this will all be rolled out here shortly. But like I said, the city has plenty of things, so, but we are working on that, and I should hope to have some answers for you in September.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you Fred.
Good evening, Gary Tuzan on 169 Fairmount Avenue. I come tonight because I am the chairman of the newly reorganized Environmental Commission of City Hackensack. I bring before me, before you two topics that we're very interested in, and since we're basically brand-new and heading into our fourth meeting this, in September, the committee has picked a couple of topics that they would focus on, instead of kicking around a whole lot of different items. You have, you have to try and zoom in, key in on something that maybe we could all work for, for the betterment of the community. So the first topic of interest is the greenhouse in Johnson Park. Now, I know in the past there was talks of maybe having to demolish it and maybe put in a new facility related to sports, but it doesn't seem to be happening right now. So I come before you to ask if we can, we could rehabilitate the greenhouse to some effect, whether, and by that I mean, get the funds, that the city would, you know, consider this, get the funds to have a study performed by an architectural engineering firm to see if the existing facility could be salvaged, or if it has to come down and something new. Now, we had a walkthrough, and Councilman Von Rudenborg was part of the walkthrough back in July. We had two educators, Lorelei Kaminsky and Pedro Del Vecchio, come from the schools, and definitely their residents in town as well. Myself and another member of the committee, Albert Did, came down from the city, and we had two women from Montclair State University that are involved with Sustainable Ecology Studies, and very involved, and have been involved way before our commission was reorganized on the greenhouse. Also tied, these two individuals are tied into public service, electric and gas, who are very fortunate enough to come out with and give out grants for issues like this. So there are some fun, there are some funds out there that we could get to maybe offset some of the expense of having a, you know, a, a research project done and to look into this, into this greenhouse down. Now, the greenhouse is approximately 125 feet long by about 40 wide, it's quite large. The academies in Bergen just completed one not too long ago, and it's not even close to the size that we have, although it's modern and up to, up to speed with DEP and all the other regulations. Ours is a little bit behind that, there's asbestos issues, there's.
Glass issues.
Blazing issues with glass, so there's a lot to be looked at, which I can't say because I'm not a professional in that area. Not too long ago, the kids in the high school were in the greenhouse, there's a sign hanging there that says Hackensack High School. I've seen photos of the kids planting in there as well, some trees, some plants. Where they went, I don't know, but there was some studies. Am I out of time?
That you just ran out, but what was, real quick, you had a second item.
I have one more topic, I'd like, if you can give me a minute, if not, I'll wait for the.
Well, just.
Okay, but that's.
Just tell us what it's about, so then we can reach out, reach out to you.
That's the main focus on that. The second topic is an idea we had last year about green.
I wouldn't go into that, Gary, because we're, we only, we cut everybody at three, but.
I'll come back in at the meeting.
All right, thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Leila Amyramsa, and I'm a resident on 115 Poli Fly Road. I'm also a member of the Board of Education Buildings and Grounds Committee. I just wanted to add on one quick note for everyone here. You can go to the school district's website to find frequently asked questions, updates to the buildings and grounds, presentation that you saw tonight. You can also download the presentations on the district website, you'll see on the homepage a place where it talks about facilities, projects. We also have an advisory committee that's open to the public, I think we will be, or it has been reopened, so anyone in the community that would like to be a part of the advisory committee, we invite you to go to the district website and to join the advisory committee. Community education and outreach has been a big part of this process, and it will be, it will continue to be extremely important for us to educate everyone on the presentation that you saw tonight and to answer as many questions as possible. So we definitely want people to stay updated, and want you to go to the district website for as much information as possible. The other thing that I wanted to mention, wearing a different hat, I'm the Director of Development for New Jersey Citizen Action, which is a statewide HUD-certified housing counseling agency. I do want to just urge everyone to contact the Urban League, which is one of the few housing counseling agencies here in Bergen County. Just to kind of jump onto what was said before, there are two programs right now that the state of New Jersey offers for homeowners who are having trouble with their mortgages. One is the New Jersey Home Saver Program, which is the result of, a part of the federal hardest-hit funds. So you would have to go to the state of New Jersey's Housing and Mortgage Finance Agency's website to apply for Home Saver funding, which can give you up to $50,000 if you're a distressed homeowner, depending upon their eligibility guidelines. You have to meet the state of New Jersey's eligibility guidelines to qualify for the Home Saver Program. The other program that was recently relaunched last week is the state of New Jersey's Foreclosure Mediation Program, which is something that the governor recently relaunched, providing free housing counseling assistance for up to 2,000 homeowners across the state. If you are facing foreclosure and have received a foreclosure notice in the mail, you can receive free housing counseling as you go through the foreclosure process. So definitely homeowners should contact HUD-certified counseling agencies here in Bergen County, that would be the Urban League, and also the Fair Housing Council of Northern New Jersey. Our organization is statewide and our main office is in Newark, but it's definitely important for any, any homeowners who are having trouble with their mortgage to reach out to an agency as soon as possible and to avoid paying these, you know, foreclosure rescue offices that usually charge a lot of money for what counseling agencies can do for free.
Thank you Leila, appreciate that information. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, motion to close?
Offer.
All in favor? Aye. Need a motion to go into closed session?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye. Whereas the Mayor and Council of the City of Hackensack deem it necessary to discuss certain actions under Section 7B7 and 7B8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, which pertains to matters falling within attorney-client privilege, ongoing litigation, personnel matters concerning the employment of a current or prospective public employee. Whereas the Mayor and Council of the City of Hackensack is of the opinion that such circumstances may presently exist. And whereas the Mayor and Council, we should discuss the following issues: personnel matters, ongoing litigation, matters involving attorney-client privilege, matters involving the purchase, lease, or acquisition of real property, any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiations. Now therefore be it resolved, the Mayor and Council of the City of Hackensack deem it necessary to exclude the public from this discussion. The outcome of the discussion will be discussed within 90 days, or at such time as the interests of the city do not require confidentiality. Do you have anything?
I have no specific one right now. Anything from you? Due to the length of the, the meeting tonight, we may come out a few minutes late, but, because we only have 20 minutes, but we'll do our best. All right? See everybody shortly. Need a motion to close the executive session?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
And motion to close the council, the hall?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Madam Clerk?
In closed session, we discuss the following litigations: the Ziza matter, Capri, Kluber, Accruy, and Revy.
Thank you.